Well, I kind of have a no deal from the girl. I'm upset. I want that right now. I did that today. Do you know about, uh, question numbers?
For the allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. You have the first call.
Benel.
Present.
Eubank.
Here.
Gaunt.
Yes, Mayor.
Gross.
Here.
Honeycutt.
Here.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry. Neal.
Here.
Norman.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Here.
Witcher.
Here.
Eleven present.
You have the minutes from the council meeting on February 25th in front of you. I'll entertain a motion to accept those or to make any changes that you might have to them.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Councilman, um, Kirkpatrick. Kirkpatrick, I have a second from Councilman Benel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Minutes pass. At this time, the first thing on the agenda, we're going to swear in two police, two police officers. Chief, if you'd bring them up while...
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel. Gentlemen will step to the front. I'd like to introduce to the council tonight, uh, two new officers. Uh, the first is Officer Trey Wyatt. He is a, uh, local young man. He graduated from Barron County High School in 2014. He then attended South Central Kentucky Community and Technical College. Uh, he currently resides in Smith Grove. He graduated from the Department of Criminal Justice Training on March the 7th. He started his 13-week field training program today. Uh, he also received the Fit for Duty Award at DOC JT. Standing next to Trey is Officer Mark Cromwell. He comes to us from Russell Springs, Kentucky. He's a graduate from the Cumberland County High School. Um, he has 17 years of law enforcement experience, worked in Russell County Sheriff's Office and the Berksville Police Department. He is a certified firearms instructor and meth lab technician. And we'd like to, uh, introduce them tonight to the Glasgow Police Department. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. You both raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue a citizen thereof. And I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of police officer according to law. And I do further solemnly swear or affirm that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying a challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Welcome, both of you. Thank you.
Mayor, at this time, Trey's mom, Amanda, will come up and pin his badge on. Some of you may know his dad, Chris Wyatt. He's with the Barron County Sheriff's Office, so he's keeping it in the family. Officer Trey Wyatt. This time, I'd ask Officer Wesley Hicks to come up and pin Officer Cromwell's badge. Wesley, you put it on every day, dude. Counsel, ladies and gentlemen, Officer Mark Cromwell.
Thank you, Chief. First item on agenda is discussion on the audit that was presented during the February 25th, 2019 meeting and, uh, vote on the accepted correction on that audit. Uh, I don't see anybody in Taylor, Paulson here. Did you get your corrected copy?
Yes, I did. The difference was, um, they failed to take the commitment for the fire cook out and then there was a $147 error.
And that's been corrected?
It's been corrected.
Okay. Everything else on it, we, we thought was, we approved, but at this time, do I have a motion to approve the audit?
Motion.
Have a motion from Kirkpatrick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Honeycutt. All those in favor of approving the audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those approve, likes, I mean, oppose, like sign. It passes. The next, uh, item on agenda is a second reading of ordinance amending the Glasgow zoning ordinance rezoning property located intersection of Lena Drive and Beverly Drive and approximately 400 feet southwest from Lena Drive and East Main. And I'll let the city attorney read that in its entirety.
City of Glasgow ordinance number 2019 dash blank and ordinance amending Glasgow zoning ordinance rezoning property located at the intersection of Lena Drive and Beverly Drive and approximately 490 feet southwest from Lena Drive and East Main Street intersection being 115 Beverly Drive, Glasgow, Kentucky, containing 0.906 acres more or less in the city of Glasgow, Kentucky, from an R1 residential and B2 general business to B2 general business classification. A schematic drawing of said property is subject to rezoning is attached here too as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Paragraph two, a trial-type due process hearing concerning said proposed zoning change was held on January 22nd, 2019 at 7:00 PM by the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission resulted in the recommendation by the commission that the property herein actually described to be rezoned from R1 residential and B2 general business to B2 general business classification. Number three, copies of the findings and recommendations of the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission have been forwarded to the city council, which are hereby adopted by the Glasgow City Council and are attached to this zoning ordinance as Exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. Section number one, the findings and recommendations of the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission, copies of which are attached here to as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section two, the property located at the intersection of Lena Drive and Beverly Drive approximately 490 feet southwest from Lena Drive and East Main Street intersection being 115 Beverly Drive, Glasgow, Kentucky, containing 0.906 acres more or less, is rezoned from an R1 residential and B2 general business to B2 general business classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being more particularly described in Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section number three, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the Glasgow City Council on December 30th, 1991. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, TS Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Before we go any further on this, uh, ordinance, any of you in the crowd that are here, was here for the officer swearing in, you're welcome to leave, but we entertain that you're also welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. If you want to leave, you can, before we go any further. You're welcome. Thank you for reminding me. I knew that's what they were all here for, but I forgot. Do I have a motion to approve this ordinance? Have a motion from, uh, Kirkpatrick and I have a second from Norman. This being a second reading, we'll have a roll call vote on this ordinance.
Benel.
Aye.
Eubank.
Here.
Gaunt.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
I'm staying.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Neal.
Yes.
Norman.
Yes.
Norris.
Yes.
Trigg.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
Got 10 yes, one abstaining, one ayes.
Okay. Ordinance passes, comes to law. The next, uh, item on the agenda is municipal order reappointing Sarah Smiler to the Historic Preservation Committee.
City of Glasgow. City of Glasgow Municipal Order Number Blank on Order of the Mayor, Sarah Smiler is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. This appointment shall be a two-year term expiring March 31st, 2021 and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this blank day of March 2019. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Do I have a motion to approve this municipal order?
Motion.
Have a motion from, uh, Councilman Norris and have a second from Councilman Witcher. All those approve of this, uh, municipal order signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, like sign. Municipal order passes. The next, uh, the next item on the agenda is municipal order reappointing Betty Herbert to the Historic Preservation Committee.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order Number Blank on Order of the Mayor, Betty Herbert is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. This appointment...
Reappointing Al McGlover to the Historic Preservation Committee.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order Number Blank on Order of the Mayor, Al McGlover is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. This appointment shall be a two-year term expiring March 31st, 2021 and is subject to approval of the Glasgow City Council this blank day of March 2019. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Do I hear a motion to approve this order?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Norris, a second by Councilman Neal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, like sign. Municipal order passes. Next item on the agenda is municipal order reappointing Brian Clemmons to the GEDL Committee, which is the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order Number Blank on Order of the Mayor, Brian Clemmons is hereby reappointed to serve as a member of the GEDL Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund Board. This appointment shall be a two-year term expiring March 31st, 2021 and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this blank day of March 2019. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Do I have a motion to approve this order? Have, have a motion from, uh, Councilman Gross and have a second from Councilman Kirkpatrick. All those, uh, approve of this municipal order signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, like sign. Order carries. Next item on the agenda is the municipal order establishing Strategic Planning Committee of the Glasgow City Council.
City of Glasgow Municipal Order Number 2019 dash blank, Municipal Order Establishing the Strategic Planning Committee of the Glasgow City Council. On Order of the Mayor, there is created the Strategic Planning Committee of the Glasgow City Council, which shall be comprised of seven members of the Glasgow City Council to be appointed by the mayor for two-year terms. The initial members of the committee shall be Terry Benel Chairman, Marner Kirkpatrick, Wendell Honeycutt, Patrick Gaunt, James Happy Neal, Sherry Eubank, and Gary Norman. This municipal order is hereby adopted in all respects and is subject to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this blank day of March 2019. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Do I have a motion to, uh, to approve this order?
No motion.
Have a motion from, uh, Witcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from, uh, Councilman Norman. All those approve of this municipal order signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, uh, oppose signify by like sign. Order to establish the planning committee passes.
Can citizens, they base, can they come to this meeting or is it, is it just us and then we'll...
No, the public and the, and the paper, anybody can come that wants to come can come. Whether or not they're on the agenda to speak to that will be up to the chairman of your committee.
I just want to come with this.
Will there be some kind of format and that they follow or will they develop, develop that themselves or what? The strategic planning, it'll be geared in the form of Kentucky League of Cities, what they have approved in other cities and it'll be sort of laid out on those terms. Next, uh, item on the agenda is, uh...
Did you vote on that already?
Huh?
Did you vote on that already?
Yeah. Okay, okay. Uh, next order of business is an ordinance, uh, first reading of an ordinance increasing the amount of funds by the city for the economic development.
City of Glasgow Ordinance Number 2019 dash blank and ordinance increasing the amount of funds contributed by the city of Glasgow for economic development from 60,000 to 120,000 to be included in the budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020 and designate that said contribution shall not be used for salaries nor advertising, but shall be utilized on projects only and pursuant to an inter-local agreement to be negotiated with the Barron Fiscal Court, which is providing similar funding for economic development. Whereas the Barron Fiscal Court has changed their allocation of funding for economic development from 60,000 to 120,000 and designate that said funds shall not be used for salaries and advertising, but shall be used for direct incentives to attract economic development jobs to this area. And whereas the city of Glasgow has always worked with county government to attract economic development and has contributed similar amounts of funding in the past, and whereas the Barron Fiscal Court has expressed a desire that the collective funds contributed by city and county be administered pursuant to an inter-local agreement whereby said funds will be applied directly to economic development in Glasgow and Barron County. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Glasgow as follows. Section number one, the contribution of the city of Glasgow to economic development for the city of Glasgow be increased from $60,000 to $120,000 in the budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to negotiate an inter-local agreement with Barron Fiscal Court for administration and usage of any amount of said funds for economic development purposes that do not involve salaries and advertising. The inter-local agreement shall be approved by the Glasgow City Council prior to transfer of funds to the account to be used for economic development, that this ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its date of passage, approval, and publication as required by law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Do I, uh, do I hear a motion to accept this ordinance? Have a motion by Mr., uh, Councilman Honeycutt? Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Norris?
Can I add a question?
Sure.
If we're not going to have, in, in the county, it sounds like they're ahead of us in this, so they've already agreed on all this fiscal report. So what were the extra 60,000 or actually what was the ex, what was the 120,000? If we're not having salaries or advertising, who's going to run this? Who's going to run?
The Economic Development, uh, Board for the city will run ours along with me.
The GEDL?
No, no, we'll have just councilmen on this.
Oh, okay, so you're starting a whole new...
We've got to have a new council set up for it and then it may be to worry that there may be a joint committee between the county and the city that will meet jointly, but for the time being, it'll just be the councilman here will be on that committee.
Now, are we going to be able to see what this money would go for?
Sure.
I mean, before we...
When we have an incentive, a group that comes in here for employment and before we furnish any incentives, it'll go before that committee and then that committee will also bring it to the, to the council for a final vote.
I mean, before we...
But we don't know who we're going to spend it on. We don't have, we have four or five prospects, but we, we don't have anybody in the mill to spend the money on. We'll put it in our budget and then it'll be approved through that committee and through this body here of how we spend it.
I'm telling you, the inter-local agreement has to be agreed by this...
Right.
Our current budget is, I may be correct on this, our current budget is 55,000, right? Or not 60? Now, may, I'm staying correct.
It may be 55, but the total amount that was spent the last three years was 60,000.
I'm just, I'm just saying our budget for the last three years was spent 55 on, so...
Well, we're going to budget, and the inter-local agreement, once it's worked out, will also have to be approved by this body.
Is this original 55, is this still going to what the idea is now and then this other?
No. Its entirety going to stay right here within this body.
So we're just doing away with the idea, I'm assuming, or quit...
For this year, for 2019, 2020. Their director has retired and if they want to hire another director, then this board, if it looks like it's going to be a, a good deal, then this board can, can come back and reallocate money toward idea, but at this time right now, if, uh, I don't think the majority of the people are happy with the way things have been going, so we're going to try to do better.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions on, on this.
All right.
The, the dollar amount is a good increase and I appreciate the increase there, but I think there's too many restrictions in this ordinance. Um, you know, not having money available for advertising or salaries. I mean, if, if we had an opportunity to advertise in a statewide publication about a building site that we have, then this ordinance restricts that because it takes advertising out of the money. And I feel that that's too restrictive to us and could hamper us as we look out into the future. Again, the amount's a good increase, but we've put too many restrictions on it. It's locked us down and I think it's going to hamper us as we move forward on this. Uh, we're not talking here about a capital project. We're talking about spending money as far as incentives go and I think we need to be open and willing to look at what might come down the road for us. There's a lot of what ifs, uh, but the way I see this ordinance written right now, it is just too restrictive to us and it locks us down, puts a clamp on what we could do for the money.
The, they have other monies they can spend, though. They still have funds available.
Well, I guess, Councilman Honeycutt, I'm talking about with the city, though. If, if we're saying we're going to allocate $120,000 in the next budget, then we have just put restrictions on how that money can be used. What if something comes down the road in October of this year for us and we place a restriction? Why would we want to handcuff ourselves with this? The increase is, again, I admire the increase. We need jobs, but to put a restriction and just say it's going to be used for incentives, I think it's the wrong plan for us.
Let me give you two options. One, if that arises, the, the GEDL Board has agreed that they would come forth and do take care of advertisement if we felt like we needed to and even budget for a, a small amount for a, uh, salary. However, if that's not suitable, I'd entertain a motion to do an addendum to this and we could vote on that. If you feel like it ought to be less restrictive and everybody here agrees on that, fine.
Well, my just comments, you know, personal comments and when I've talked to other people in the community is that, you know, the salaries and their advertising, that again, clamps us down, locks us down, puts us inside a box when we're talking here about what we can spend money on economic development. And, and I, I don't know what's going to come down the road tomorrow, let alone six months from now, when we, we're in the full, uh, mode of our budget and we have money allocated for this, so I think we're, we're taking a too drastic step to restrict usage of money to help us attract jobs to Glasgow.
We're basically marrying the county, what they've already done. However, if you don't think that the GEDL Committee will step up on that and you want to make a, a, uh, adjustment to this, you're welcome to propose. Go ahead.
Oh, Terry, you could do an amendment to add an additional allocation for advertising that would be dedicated to advertising and, and if it was needed, it would be used and if it wasn't needed, it wouldn't be used, but it wouldn't diminish this commitment, which we're doing to show, uh, solidarity with what the county's been willing to do, but try to get that money there to, to make incentives. So if you'd like to add an advertising, uh, allocation on top of this, you could do an amendment and that could be done tonight, uh, if you'd like to do what amendment.
As far as the county did, the way I understand it, they didn't have any restrictions on it. They just allocated 120,000 to the idea board.
That's wrong.
That's wrong.
That's wrong.
Before we, before we vote, I mean, since evidently the, the county's ahead of us on this and they've already done this, wouldn't it be good to look at what they've already got, because we could get it in the morning, whatever they're...
That's what this is modeled after.
I know, but we'll see the exact, I mean, whether they get it or not. And then the second thing, you know, I mean, I, I echo your point, Terry, that I don't want to be painting the box, but, you know, and I agree, I, I understand... wanna be painting the box, but, you know, and I agree, I, I understand there are, uh, people out there that don't agree with the idea board and the way it's gone, uh, but I don't see any data that tells me, you know, I don't know how much occupational tax we've received...
To it than what just, hey, we're down this many jobs, or this factory closed, or, you know, there's occupational tax that we're receiving as a city right now. So, I mean, for me personally, I'm not comfortable dating, spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of the city's money without any data of why I would do that, to restrict any salaries or any advertising or anything like that. Not that I couldn't get there, I just don't have the data in front of me, in my opinion.
If you look on, uh, page thirty-eight of our audit, if anybody happens to have it with you, the economic development and assistance, uh, fund balance at June thirtieth was nine hundred, two thousand, nine hundred dollars. So they... Is that cash? It's not all cash. But they do have ways to spend money if they have a...
And I agree, is it in our best interest, though? We got a county, got a deal, we got a deal, idea's got a deal. I don't know that Frankfurt wants to see three different deals, even if we interlock with the county, I don't hear us interlocking with idea board. So now we got two, we got two groups that, somebody's going to Frankfurt if we elect to spend that nine hun... I don't know how that works, and what, I don't really understand what's going away or what's staying. But I don't think Frankfurt wants to deal with two different groups, to your point, even though there's nine hundred thousand dollars worth of assets.
I spoke to Frankfurt this morning and put a deal on the table, and it's more than it's been coming out of idea board in years. So, I mean, plus, we've got two jobs in the process right now, two companies that are big, big deals, and one of them has already talked to Frankfurt, but... Crew people, and here in the next ten days or two weeks, there's gonna be one announcement made, and I think most of you saw the announcement, where we got the investors to buy the Dana Building, and we can use that as a incubator for several different companies, or one large one, if Frankfurt can put the deal together now for one large company. So, I mean, there's things going on. It's not just, we're trying to, trying to lay out the groundwork so we can act when it happens to act, and if, you know, it's up to you guys what you're gonna do.
So, Mayor, the intent of this ordinance is to defund the idea board?
No, it's to get jobs in here, Councilman.
All right, well, I mean, but I mean, you, you wanna take the fifty-five thousand that was normally slated for the idea board and move that to a new interlocal agreement that hasn't been established yet, and move that up to a hundred and twenty thousand? Is that the basis?
We're gonna change the existing interlocal agreement. We're not gonna do, start a new one. We're gonna change the one that we now are in, and we're gonna have those funds where they're available for this board and the, the committee, Economic Development Committee, to work with. That's, that's, that's what it is.
If I remember, and I, it's been a few years since I've been on there, but the interlocal agreement was set up. We received different times grant money, but it had to be an arms-length agreement away from, it couldn't be the city controlling it or the county. It had to be a one-off, that's why the agreement was made. So, I mean, again, I'd rather, I mean, if the county's already made theirs, it sounds like they've already took a step, and they're no longer with idea, I'm assuming, and I don't know if idea knows that, or, or whatever it's called, BECA, whatever it is now. But, I mean, I, I would feel more comfortable voting on it once I saw the counties, what they're doing, and now I'd just like to see a little more data. That would be for me.
That's fine. The interlocal agreement was set up with about a million dollars from the city's payroll taxes. That's what set up idea. That's where the funds first started.
Yeah, I agree.
And that was all through the city, and then the county started contributing the second year.
But we, while I was on there, I think we got a couple million dollars' worth of grants because it was an arm-length agreement between the city and county, but it took both of them. I just don't know whether this interlocking agreement, you know, I don't know. I, I just would rather know because I don't wanna set something up that prohibits us from gaining grants or anything else.
And that can get, gets back to the comments I'm trying to make on this. The hundred and twenty thousand, again, is a good number, but if we put restrictions on it, then we, again, we have restricted ourselves. According to an article in Site Selection Magazine, October two thousand eighteen, the number one reason that companies chose an area was workforce, number two was transportation infrastructure, number three was building and sites. Now, if we've got a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we're allocating, and we wanna spend money on our workforce development, where does that fall in this? We should be free to spend that hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I don't, I don't wanna see any restrictions placed on that money.
Let me explain something about the workforce development. If you'll go next Monday, Frankfurt's gonna be down here, and they're gonna be at the fiscal court on Tuesday. There's already a plan for the workforce development that's in place that we explained next Tuesday at the, at the, and that's not of any cost to the city at this point.
And I understand that, Mayor, but how just, to, to you and to the fellow council members and the citizens of Glasgow, I don't see why we wanna restrict a hundred and twenty thousand dollars when there could be opportunities to spend that in a multiple usage. That, that to me is, is, why do I wanna limit myself? We talk about the Glasgow Economic Development Loan. That, to me, is where incentives come through that. I don't know the dollar, I think the dollar balance now in that fund is about six hundred thousand dollars now.
Five to six hundred thousand.
It's five hundred and eighty-six thousand, I think.
Okay, five hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars now. But, but that's set aside for incentives. Why couldn't we use this hundred and twenty thousand on economic development to create jobs in our community and just be that open with it? And, and what comes or what needs come our way, then we can spend the money like that.
Amend the ordinance. That's fine.
It's, it just sounds like there's a lot of stuff happening in the next seven days. We're March, whatever day is, fourteenth. This ain't going into the next budget, which is in the June. Could we not wait two weeks? Let us all get a copy of Barron County's fiscal court thing tomorrow. The workforce development sounds like it'll be done Monday. Got two job announcements, maybe, or factory announcements coming in the next couple of weeks. In two weeks, we're gonna have a lot more information than we do now. My recommendation would just be to push this back two weeks. I don't see the urgency to do it right now. Maybe there is, but I don't know that right now.
Well, I mean, I think, again, we can move forward with it, but my actual amended where we didn't have the restrictions based on advertisement and salaries, we just said from this legislative body in the budgeting process, we were moving it from sixty or fifty-five thousand up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and using it for the creation of jobs.
Did, uh, yeah, did you tell us that there is, uh, advertising money in the GEDL? Is that correct? The committee, the last time the committee met, they stated, because we've got a proposal to a business now, and we're trying to get the contract signed, they said if it takes more, we're willing to, to do it. And they also said if you need advertisement or other funds from us, we're available. So there's been cooperative effort already? From the GEDL? Okay. Board, yes. Yes, we met, I guess, a couple of weeks ago, because we made a proposal to a retail group to come here, and we're supposed to be waiting on the contracts for that.
Terry, if I might, because I have to write things for the, the council here, and, and I'm asking from the sincere desire of trying to figure out where we're going here, it's your position that you want to be able to use the money for salaries?
Yes, or advertising, or any other need that is in job growth, creation of jobs.
In order for us to match what the county's doing in, in the interest of cooperating and so forth, do you think we ought to allocate additional funds that would be earmarked for salaries and advertising and leave this allocation intact for economic development?
Well, my only...
And I'm only asking so that I can word it the proper way to reflect where we're going.
Again, my only concern with that is that, again, we, we are locking ourselves down and saying, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars can, cannot be used, any of that money cannot be used for advertising or salaries.
That's exactly right.
I'm saying, why do we wanna do that? I'm saying that to the county as well, but I'm saying it because I represent the citizens of Glasgow, is I don't wanna lock us down and confine us to that, because there may become other needs for us to spend those dollars.
For salaries and advertising.
It could be for anything, yeah.
Well, you can use it for other things. This is just saying you can't use it for salaries and advertising.
Exactly, I think we're limiting.
Because a lot of the money's been used for that before, and some people feel that's not giving the results that we need, but that's their opinion.
Well, I think there's an opportunity, there's an opportunity for us to change that, even though it hadn't happened in the past, who knows what's gonna happen in the future, it's a lot of what ifs, and we gotta be positive and feel like we're moving forward with it, and I think this is too restrictive. So I would make an amendment to this ordinance, if I can, that we remove the language relating to the restriction on salaries and advertisement.
Yes.
That's proper. You can tell me the parliamentary procedures on that.
If we vote on it like this and fails, then we can regroup and just do away with it or not anything.
Sure.
If it passes, and then we get all the information, and it comes back two weeks from now, and everybody wants to, to oppose it, then can't we oppose it then, and it die?
You could impose it and let it die then, or you can amend it then and have two additional, have a new reading then and a new second reading, and pass it as amended with your amendment at that time.
Could, could we not just pause for two weeks? Is that an option? Or could we vote on that, or is it, we gotta vote on that?
Can we vote on it and see if it's gonna pass right now? And then wait on, and then take the second one?
I got one question, though. The GEDL, uh, always before it's been funded, through idea board?
No. You're right. It comes right here in, in the GEDL fund in the City of Glasgow. They come before us and ask if we would fund so many dollars for a project, and the GEDL board either approves it or disapproves.
Now, where does the GEDL money come from? Where do they get their money from?
It came from two things. One, that first million dollars that the city put in there, and then some of it was, was, uh, revolving loan fund that ceased to exist several years ago. It was about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
I may ask, be asking wrong. Where are we getting the money here going forward, from March fifteenth on? Where will we get money into this GEDL?
Same place we've got it in the last ten years, nowhere.
Okay, so no money's gone in there in the last ten years?
Except for that revolving loan fund that was, that was dormant, that was put back into that account. The state allowed us to put that money back over into G, GEDL fund because the state no longer funds that. And there are still some outstanding revolving loans that, once they're paid back, can go back into the GEDL. But we're not anticipating, taking payroll taxes and putting into that loan.
But you're saying no money's gone into that. We've been living off, what did you said, five hundred and eighty-six thousand? We've been living off...
Yeah.
Idea board, we gave away more than four hundred and thirty, four hundred and fourteen thousand.
That's actually some grants, like you said a while ago.
Yeah, but I mean, that's what I'm saying. Where's that money gonna come, um, going forward? Is, are we gonna be able to?
We get grants and go back...
Fifty-five thousand, and we already done in the past. Nothing's gonna go to idea, the hundred and twenty's gonna go into a separate...
Here, and the committee will control that.
So we're doing something away from idea?
We're doing away with it. For this nineteen point for our donation to the idea board, we're doing away with it. Correct.
But we'll still have two organizations doing the same job?
I don't know that. I don't know if the idea board is, is exist today, will exist after June one. I don't know. I don't have a vote. The city does not have a vote on that board. The county does not have a vote on that. And the county judge appoints people, but we have no bearing on how they'll vote or anything, because once you're appointed to that board, we cannot influence their vote. We have a vote on that, we're gonna stand to try to attract this one duck here, two ducks, three ducks. We have more control over our dollars for citizens of Glasgow than we have in our account, than we depend on somebody else to do something. That's my opinion.
But to, to your point, I know of five projects idea's working on right now. So I mean, are they just gonna go by the wayside? A couple of these are over in Cape City. Two, two looking at going to Cape City right now.
Well, those are Cape City's development, and he, he says he's gonna finish all that before he retires.
Okay, I mean, I've...
He doesn't. If he doesn't, but if they're really on the end, then Cape City mayor, the county, uh... You know, hopefully, he's got them done.
And I hope somebody coming forwards, got magic that can make things happen on timeframes, but that hasn't been my experience dealing with Frankfurt or dealing with, with companies.
I don't think we're depending on magic. I think we're depending on hard work and transparency here.
Okay. But just that...
This committee you're talking about? It'll be county and city? No. It'll be our, they have, they have an economic, we're gonna take people out of this board right here and put on a committee, and they'll be the ones that either approve it or disapprove it. Once they approve it, if they do, then it'll come before the city's council for their...
And we all still appoint that the idea board stays? Will you still appoint to the idea board like we've been doing in the county, or?
I don't know how they will. I mean, I don't know how it works.
Well, but I mean, you have that say as a mayor. For your, for your three votes, I don't know if any of them's up yet, but I'm just trying to figure out, we got two entities running here, or one getting ready to start, one...
We're gonna have three.
But I just, for me, like I said, we can do whatever everybody wants to, but I would just like to pause to get my arms around this, because I can't, I hope it works, and I hope hard work comes through, uh, but I, it's just confusing to me if it's, and maybe it's not to anybody else, but it is to me.
I have two questions, Mayor. One for Councilman Benel. You feel like this ordinance is too restrictive when the GEDL said that they would come up, step on the plate, say they'll take care of the advertising and the salaries if needed?
I, I do, and, and this is the reason I feel that, because that fund was set up for in... We're saying to them now, we want you to help us with advertising to, and, and again, Councilman Kupratic, I, I'm saying the hundred and twenty is just too restrictive. Why put that restriction on it? Why not? Same money, it's been under our control. The way I understand it, it's been under our control in both of their situations.
The other money come from for advertising and salaries?
That money shall be activated in nineteen eighty-three. From that come up as a way to generate funds, hopefully, to have enough jobs online, so lose the jobs without enough jobs, or we can allocate some of the payroll tax. Your profit to show anybody that wants to come... Jobs, what were you gonna put? But we have... Industry in here, and we depend on giving them a hundred thousand dollars for a hundred jobs. Where in the past, they're used to giving us a hundred... Five employers that are looking at twenty-five jobs, twenty jobs, thirty jobs, and they're gonna require probably fifty thousand dollars of incentives for each one of those to get them into Cape City. But the lands over there, that is, where they can propose giving them a lot, if they'll build an industry on there, you probably won't have to worry about the cash incentives and the Cape City industrial development, but we're gonna have to figure out where you get another development in Glasgow, and that's gonna be in the county. Hopefully, it'll be close enough that we can annex it into the city, because the county doesn't have to pay our tax and, and the occupational tax that we have, so it won't generate funds if it's in the county.
We, we talked earlier, asking about, you know, economic development, and here's some statistics from the Kentucky Chamber. This is for the time period June two thousand nine through December two thousand seventeen. So during the recession period, coming out of the recession period, Barron County had a thousand fifty-nine net job growth during that time period. A thousand fifty-nine. Hart County, seven hundred and fifty. Monroe County, six hundred and ten. Simpson County, a thousand two hundred twenty-six, and Warren County, eleven thousand five hundred and twenty-four. Simpson County, 1,226. And Warren County, 11,524. So our net job growth during that time period, 1,059 employees. That's not very many.
That manufacturing jobs?
Jobs across the board. Jobs.
Let me, let me say something. One of the, my favorite business classes, they taught us a saying, "If you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got." I think everybody knows that. What has happened in this last budget, this last fiscal year, not budget, but the last fiscal year in this audit, you'll see our taxes revenues went down, even though the economy's picking up. I think it's time to do something different. And from having worked with a brand-new company coming in here, I went to work for one as a third United States citizen hired by that company. I know that city-county cooperation is what attracted them. It's not what the IDEA Board offered or anything else. It was the, the cooperation between the two governments that makes a big difference. They, they saw that. They knew that we were a community that could make things happen when they saw that. I think that's what's important. I think it's time to make a change. I think it's time to, to adopt this like the county did and cooperate with them fully.
All those approve of this first reading of this order signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by like sign.
Aye.
Can we give a roll call, please?
Benel?
No.
Eubank?
Yes.
Gaunt?
No.
Gross?
No.
Honeycutt?
Yes.
Kurt Patrick?
Yes.
Neil?
No.
Norman?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Trigg?
No.
Witcher?
Yes.
Have six yes and five no. First reading will pass. Next item on the agenda, resolution authorizing directing April Russell, the director of office of grant oversight, the Division of Waste Management.
2019 blank, a resolution authorizing and directing April Russell, director of office of grant oversight, to apply for a grant from the Division of Waste Management Waste Tire Program to purchase trail benches, park benches, and picnic tables for the Parks and Recreation Department. Be it resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows, that April Russell, director of the Office of Grant Oversight, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on the city's behalf with the Kentucky Division of Waste Management Waste Tire Program for a 75-25 grant in the amount of $12,521 to purchase trail benches, park benches, and picnic tables for the Parks and Recreation Department. This is a matching grant, and the city is required to match the sum of $3,131 by in-kind labor and/or cash. Be it further resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that Harold Armstrong, mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary to make application for said grant, and the City of Glasgow is hereby committed to meet its match obligation of $3,131 of in-kind labor and/or cash. So adopted this blank day of March 2019, Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Hearing the resolution read. Hearing the resolution read. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Motion. Have a motion from Councilman Norris to have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Patrick. All those in favor?
I have a question on this, ma'am. Mr. Russell, ask a question. When it talks about the, the city's contribution there, what form will that take?
It'll be partially in-kind. The other part will be cash. There's just not that much to do to put together picnic tables and park benches. Anything that's cash, we put into the FY20 budget.
Okay. And then restrictions on this, the 75%?
We have to use recycled tires. Other than that, the recycle forever.
And that's no problem with that?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All those approve of this resolution signify by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. Resolution passes. The next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation, United States of America, for a grant under Fixing American Surface Transportation Act.
City of Glasgow, Resolution 2019 blank, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation, United States of America, for a grant under Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, the FAST Act. Whereas the Secretary of Transportation is authorized to make grants for mass transportation projects, and whereas the contract for financial assistance will impose certain obligations upon the applicant, including the provision by it of the local share of the project cost, and where it is required by the U.S. Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, FAST Act, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Department of Transportation requirements thereunder, and whereas, whereas it is required by the U.S. Department of Transportation in accordance with the provisions of Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Section 504 of Rehabilitation Act of 1973 and the U.S. Department of Transportation requirements thereunder, and where it is, whereas it is required by the U.S. Department of Labor in accordance with the provisions of Section 5333B of the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, FAST Act, that in connection with the filing of an application for assistance under the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, FAST Act, and in the absence of a waiver from the U.S. Department of Labor, the applicant gives an assurance that it will comply with Section 5333B of the Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, FAST Act, and the U.S. Department of Labor requirements thereunder, and where it is, whereas it is the goal of the applicant, that disadvantaged business enterprises be utilized to the fullest extent possible in connection with this project. And the definite procedures shall be established and administered to ensure that disadvantaged businesses shall have maximum feasible opportunity to compete for contracts when procuring construction contracts, supplies, equipment contracts, or consultant and other services. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Glasgow, by the City Council of the City of Glasgow, Section 1, that Harold Armstrong, mayor of the City of Glasgow, is authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the City of Glasgow with the U.S. Department of Transportation to aid in the financing and the operating assistance projects described in the attachment. Section 2, that Harold Armstrong, mayor, is authorized to execute and file with such application an assurance or any other document required by the U.S. Department of Transportation effectuating the purpose of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Section 3, that Harold Armstrong, mayor of the City of Glasgow, is authorized to set forth and execute affirmative minority business policies in connection with the project's procurement needs. Section 4, that Harold Armstrong, mayor of the City of Glasgow, is authorized to set forth and execute with such application an assurance that the City of Glasgow will comply with the conditions of the Section 5333B warranty as required by the U.S. Department of Labor effectuating the purposes of Section 5333B of Fixing America's Surface Act, Surface Transportation Act, FAST Act. Section 5, that Harold Armstrong, mayor, is authorized to furnish such additional information as the U.S. Department of Transportation may require in connection with the application of the project. Section 6, that Harold Armstrong, mayor, is authorized to execute grant contract agreements on behalf of the City of Glasgow with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for aid in the financing of the operating assistance project. This resolution, Section 7, shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its adoption, first passage blank day of March 2019, Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution as read? Have a motion from Councilman Honeycutt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Norris. All those approve-
Mayor of the Mayor of Kentucky, I have a question on this from Mrs. Russell. Is she, please? In Section 1, it describes there to aid in the financing of the operating assistance projects described in the attachment. What would be in those attachments?
The attachment is, I don't have it in front of me, but I'm certain that's what he just read from, right? It'd be the type, this is basically, we do this every year. It's the same, kinda like it was last week. This one just didn't get added in. We have to do these every year for our grant, for our transit system. This one is making sure we follow, follow the Title VI certification, which is, I'll read you a quick synopsis of what Title VI is.
Please.
It's the simple justice required that public funds to which all taxpayers of all races, colors, and national origins contribute not to be spent in any fashion which encourages entrances subsidized or results in racial, color, or national origin discrimination.
Okay. And so that's in the attachment that we don't have in front of us?
Right. That is basically what this entire thing is, is to ensure that we follow Title VI.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All those approve of this resolution signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is municipal order, amending municipal order number 2016-709, the adoption of the standard operating procedures manual for the Glasgow Police Department.
City of Glasgow, municipal order number blank, municipal order amending municipal order number 216-709, the adoption of the standard operating procedures manual for the Glasgow Police Department. On order of the mayor, municipal order number 2016-709, the standard operating procedures manual for the Glasgow Police Department is hereby amended with additions and corrections to policy number 21.2 vehicles. All sections being added or, or are indicated by a single line drawn underneath them, and the words being deleted are indicated by a single line drawn through them. See Exhibit A. This municipal order is hereby adopted in all respects and is submitted to the approval of the Glasgow City Council this blank day of March 2019. Exhibit B is attached with the additions and corrections after the approval of the amendment. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Jamie McFarland, City Clerk. And rather than read that entire procedure, I will tell you that, if I can find the exact provision, it simply changes the distance that police officers who have a drive home vehicle can go from 25 miles from the police department to 35 miles of the city limits of Glasgow. And that's the only change that's in there. The Exhibit B is the version after that has been placed in it correctly, and Exhibit A shows the original provision lined through with the new, and I had it there, I can tell you exactly where it is, just-
It's on V2.
Okay, V2?
V.
V2?
I, I swear it is V.
But that's the only change. Under the V, says assignment to take home vehicles. You have a V, and then it's Section 2C after that. It recently said 25 miles of the police department ordered by rank and seniority, and now it'll say 35 miles of the city limits of Glasgow. Only change.
Do I have a motion to approve this municipal order?
Motion.
Have a motion by Kurt Patrick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Witcher?
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
Why we're moving to Mallettown?
Why?
Yes.
I'll let the chief police do that. I mean, police chief, speak to that, but it's to retain officers.
Sorry. What was your question, sir?
25 wasn't enough for moving it to 35. Is it for one individual, or is it for many?
It's for many. I have officers now that live in Bowling Green. I have two that live in Bowling Green. I have three that live in Columbia, and they're just right outside that area. So, and we're not the first agency to, to do this out of county. Danville is currently recruiting police officers, and that's on their recruitment brochure, out of county take-home vehicles.
Let me ask a question, Mayor. Chief Howie, talk to us a little bit about, we didn't look at 40 miles, 45 miles? I mean, why the 35 miles? Is that average in the state of Kentucky?
Well, no, sir, but 35 miles encompasses most of the residential areas close to Glasgow. And it's also a response time.
Okay. Have we seen any misuse under the current policy with take-home vehicles?
No, sir. We have not had any issues with the take-home vehicles whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
This was approved four to one by the Public Safety Committee. One of the things that really caught my attention was Chief Howie mentioned that if there is a problem and officers need to respond, they respond a lot quicker if they're in their squad car than if they have to drive to the police department and pick up their car and then go to the incident.
Another comment, if I may. After talking to everybody in the police department, some of the officers made the comment that when they were going home, if they lived 29 miles from the police department, they were going home in their private vehicle, got behind a driver that was all over the road, they could not pull that driver over in their vehicle, whereas, and save maybe a life or save an accident, but if they were in a take-home vehicle, they could, even though they were, I don't care if they were in southern Bering County, they could still pull that person over, and if they had reason to believe that there was a problem, they could issue that problem without having to call and try to bring another officer in a car to, so it, just one accident saves would be well worth our investment of doing this. I think, I think that's my opinion. Is there any other questions of the chief?
Thank you.
Thank you. Had I got a motion already? On a second? All those approve of this municipal order amending signify by saying aye. Those that oppose, like sign. Order passes. Next on the agenda, Kenny Harden, he's here, Glasgow Area Ministerial Association to address the council regarding an emergency shelter in Glasgow.
You have two pieces of information coming to you, and thank you for your time this evening. We, as Ministerial Association, over the last few years, and working with past Mayor Doty, we're looking at different ways to address just an issue regarding homeless shelters. We had different issues rising towards that as far as people asking questions about homelessness, as well as what, how we would try to approach that. The thicker of the two was one that Jim Rose put together. He used to be the pastor at First Nazarene here. He's from Columbus, Ohio. He worked with HUD in Columbus, Ohio. And while he was here, he did quite a bit of research regarding homelessness in Glasgow, and so it's got quite a bit of information, looking at a permanent type of facility for that. But as we started looking at homelessness in Glasgow, there was not a large population that we were at the time looking at that was on a regular basis homeless. But we really started to see a greater need as far as the fluctuation between churches during the winter, people who needed emergency type of shelter. So what we did was, we talked to different agencies in Bowling Green as well as in Edmonton, and looked at frequency there. And so we stepped back and we're looking at, trying to have an approach that is taking place in Bowling Green, and that is with rooms in the inn ministry. They work with the churches in Bowling Green to rotate between churches throughout the year. Theirs is throughout the year, and I think they've actually backed off to what we're looking at. November 15 through March 15, of churches rotating through and providing a night shelter for those when the weather is inclement in Co- a night shelter for those when the weather is inclement and cold. What this would mean, and what we're looking at, right now, our churches approved this as far as our elder board, but would, to be, have a central place where people could come together, and that could be either the police station, could be next step area, or possibly at the housing authority, and a place for vetting individuals who need shelter. Churches would come, pick them up, take them to their facilities, would provide a meal, a place for the night to sleep, a breakfast, and then possibly a sack lunch, and then take them back to the place where they would be dropped off. So what we're, I want to let you know, basically as a report, is as Ministerial Association, we're, one, talking among the churches that are a part of that, but we're going to take it wider to the churches and to the Liberty Baptist Association, and try to, in this next year coming in November, try to have as many churches on board and ready to implement this as a working model in our county here. And so basically, if you just take a look and just walk through it, and the person I talked with is Charlie Rogers, she works with Rooms in the Inn in Barron, I'm sorry, in Warren County and Bowling Green, and they've got a great model. I've talked with some churches that work with that also over in Bowling Green, and they've had good success with that. The big needs in that is the vetting process of making sure that you don't have anybody who has a current warrant, isn't a domestic violence abuser, and is not on drugs at that time. And then also having the personnel in your church, in our churches, that can actually be with the people, that can host them overnight. And so I would just tell you, there's, as we looked at it, and so, and talked with the different departments here, as far as police department and sheriff's department, the definition of homelessness takes, wears a lot of different hats. If you're talking to independent schools, they say anybody who doesn't have a place to stay that night is homeless, versus a HUD description that would talk more about a facility, or someone who has no resources whatsoever, as far as a car, friends, something of that sort. And so homelessness takes on different things, and that's not really our target, but as that's been researched, there's not a great population, but we want to address it as a spiritual organization responding to God's call to meet this spiritual need in our city. And so I just wanted to come with a report, is that's the direction, Mayor and council, that we're going with, is to try to provide as church a place for people to come overnight when the weather is inclement, and provide them a meal, provide them a shelter in a structured environment, and be able to take them back and drop them off during the day. Yes, sir.
Does it come to the guidelines that you all were trying to model that in Bowling Green?
Yes, sir.
Do they have the same terms as Edmonton, and I've been over there and looked at that call to them, only 30 days in a year's time that you could be there?
Yeah, no, sir. Edmonton is actually just, is a facility established for that that is permanent, and we, Room in the Inn basically is a rotating model, so this is a, just one night stay that rotates between, at this time, 17 churches that are in Bowling Green. So we're not looking at a permanent facility. We do have one church that has in town that does have apartments, they have two apartments, and they do provide facility, basically for women and children. Outside of that, the churches have been providing hotel rooms for either transients or homeless, like Happy Valley Inn, or something of that sort. And when we really looked at this, the cost to have staff, the cost for facility, when you really start fleshing this out, boy, it gets up in the hundreds of thousands to do this, and to do it well and right. And really, it would be cheaper for us to put people up in hotel rooms, but we've had bad results with that, where hotel rooms have been trashed by people we've tried to help. And so this is a way that we've seen the model, it's worked. I've talked, the churches I talk with really have had a blessing of working with these people overnight, listening to their stories, walking with them through that, and praying with them, and it's not an overt evangelistic effort. If the opportunity is there to share Christ with folks, we take that, but really it is to share the love through providing a space for those people. And so the one, I hope you take time and look at that one document where we've done the research and all the different things that go into having to provide a shelter, and then our approach. And so as we get this moving towards this next fall, I hope to come back with a report of where we are and the implementation of that.
Kenny, what can we do to help as citizens or as city council?
You know, really, I think some of the churches, some of the things they'll run into is the finances for being able to maybe implement this. We're, in our church, we're going to have, adopt a cot, where church members can adopt and pay for a cot for people to come, you know, however many you can house. And so this might be something we take a little bit bigger than the churches as we try to implement this, as different ways to resource the churches that want to do this but don't have the resources, but have a facility, and maybe have the volunteers to help, but they just don't have the money.
And we looked at it, and you're right, it goes into the hundreds, because you've got to have a male and a female, you've got to have insurance, you've got to have, what if somebody gets raped, what if somebody... I mean, I commend you for what you're trying to do, and, you know, I mean, we'll, I'll help however you can, I'm sure other people will.
Yeah. If, you know, you're part of a local church, you know, that we're going to be contacting, but you can also just put, you know, a little fire under them, just to say, you know, this is a need. And again, we don't know what it'll look like, once it's implemented, we may have one or two, we may not have any on a certain night. But I talked with Lisa at, in Edmonton, and she said that they're having to turn away, you know, sometimes 50% of the people that are trying to stay there overnight. Now, she also did say, in regards to our research, she said the majority of people they put up are from Barron County. She said, they might have one or two from Metcalf County. She said the majority are from Barron County that they're housing. So that does tell us that there is a need, so we'd like to try to make a dent in that.
Richard, I appreciate the work that you're doing and others on that, and I hope this council can look at a way to help this cause, and we look forward to hearing back from you.
Great.
It's really worthwhile.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any other business on the, nothing else on the agenda? I have some announcements to make. 2019 City Cleanup Week is March 25th through the 29th. Pickup days will be the regular garbage collection day for your pickup. Small items must be bagged or boxed and must be in with your garbage. For a list of collectible items, as well as items that will not be accepted, please go to the city website or call 270-651-5977, and those items will be relayed on to you what can be picked up and what can't. Also, there'll be a public hearing Monday, March 25th, 2019, at 10:30 a.m. here in the council chambers regarding the route changes for the transit system. Again, that'd be Monday, the 25th. It's a public hearing, Monday, March 25th, 2019, at 10:30 a.m. here in the council chambers. The next city council meeting will be March 25th, 2019, 7 p.m. here in the council chambers. The first meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee will be held March, excuse me, April 15th, 2019, at 5:30 here in the city council chambers.
And announce with a brief note that the elevator's not fixed?
Yeah, and if anybody out there doesn't realize it, our elevator's fixed, to the joy of everybody here, and we want to welcome you to come back to the meetings because the elevator's working, and we want to send another thanks out to the fiscal court for letting us use their chamber, but as you can see, we're all happy to be back home. If there's any other announcements?
Will I make a motion for adjournment?
Have a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm really new to this situation as far as the city council, but I work for Glasgow's group, and I was wondering if I could address it or set up a time where I can address this council.
I think we need to get it on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a second to the adjournment?
Second.
I have a second? We are adjourned. See me, and just see me, and I'll get it on the agenda.
Is that Witcher?
Yes. Matter of fact...